Good evening and welcome to the August 7th, 2024 Regular School Board Meeting. I would begin the meeting with the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Denise? And can I have a second? Kelly? Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor? Oop.
Are we doing the non-meeting at the end?
No, I thank you for that. We will be not having a non-meeting at the end of the -- so that will be crossed off the agenda. Thank you. Any other changes? All in favor of approving the agenda as amended? Five in favor? Okay. Do we have anyone here for public comments this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to the approval of the minutes from the July 17th, 2024 meeting, a motion to approve those minutes. Denise, thank you.
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 17th.
And a second? Brian? Are there any corrections? Go ahead.
I had a question about the adjournment. Because we adjourned the meeting before we went into the workshop, right? So the -- we adjourned for the non-meeting session around 8:00 and we weren't in there super duper long, but I don't have the time on it. And then we had the workshop and that adjourned at 9:30?
I think the minutes as of currently reflect the end of our non-public, not the end of the public portion. We didn't have an accurate time in our ending of that session.
So we adjourned the meeting at 9:30? Not the workshop meeting?
That's a good question. I think the work-- The workshop was separate, that did not require an adjournment. And because it was a non-meeting, we were not required to come back. So I think that we can strike the bold Matt Bacon made a motion and the stuff and the -- no, just that line.
Matt?
Yes.
So it does say, so you made a motion to temporarily adjourn. So are you suggesting that we just say that you made a motion to adjourn for the non-meeting?
That's a good idea also. Yep.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Okay. Thank you Heather. Thank you Denise. Anyone else? Okay, all in favor of the minutes as amended, approving the minutes as amended? Five in favor. All right, we'll move on to district announcements.
Good evening, Ms. D Lowe, Mastway School. I'd like to begin by saying my colleague David Coldsmith is not here this evening, so I am going to share an update for both elementary schools. And David and I would like to begin by publicly thanking all of our facilities folks, building and grounds custodians. The amount of hard work that have gone into preparing our schools for opening is tremendous. The schools are beautiful and we've had some really hot weather, so I just wanted to be sure that we recognize all those folks. I wanted to share that in our best effort to transition students to start the school year successfully, we have at Mastway four new family tours. Those will be offered on the 13th and the 19th at varying times, so please see the communication from our front office or feel free to call the office if you have questions. But for new families to the community, we'd love to show you around the school, introduce ourselves and answer any questions you might have. And we also have a bus available for any students, especially our incoming kindergarten that might want an opportunity to experience a school bus for the first day of school. We also will have meet and greets on the two teacher workshop days at Mastway in the afternoon, so that all of our students have an opportunity to come into the building, meet their teachers, see their classroom, just to, you know, relieve any worry that there might be on those first days of school, again, especially for kindergarten and new students. Mohermit does something very similar, it's just a little bit different. For their new families, grades one through four, they will be doing a family picnic from 5:30 to 7:00. And Mohermit will also have an open house on Monday, the 26th, for the kindergarteners coming in and their families. Again, 5:30 to 7:00. Enrollment is continuing to go up, it's quite the moving target. I met with Dr. Shapps this morning and by the time I got back to the office, I had another new enrollment. So the numbers that I gave Dr. Shapps as early as today are different than what they were when I gave that to him. We have 15 new families that have registered at Mastway and 11 currently at Mohermit. That's not counting new kindergarten, that's just counting new families to our community in the other grades. So I think the grades that I just want to make sure you're aware of, at least at Mastway, is fourth grade, which has been a trend. As you know, those third and fourth grades have had higher enrollment the last couple of years. So at this point in time, I believe I have two seats for any new fourth graders coming in and we will be at class size capacity for our fourth graders, so just to update you on that. And then I just want to share with families, placement has gone out and teachers are following up with welcome letters and we would just encourage our parents to get into Power School and complete the registration process. That would be something we would be really grateful for. Questions for me? Thank you, it's nice to see you all.
Thank you very much.
Evening, everyone. Happy summer. Bill Sullivan, middle school principal. Just a couple things, very similar to what Misty put together. A big thank you to all our custodial and facility staff. You know, we've had the honor with this great school to host all our schools ESY programs. We've had ORCSD Reach camps all here and Durham Park and Rec. We've hosted them all their summer camps as well. So it's been a ton of stuff going on here. The building's been so busy, but the custodians have done an amazing job getting it ready. Talking to David today, we're about 98% ready to be open and we've still got a few weeks to go. So they've done an amazing job, so thanks to all of them. A couple highlights this year, you'll see as you walk in, we've extended the netting on the field around the corner by the parking loop. So as you leave tonight, if you get out early enough, you'll be able to see it. Just for safety issues, that net, it goes, it's a great sized net, it's awesome to keep things in the field of play, but on the corners, and that corner specifically where kids line up and wait for the next time when they can get on the field, we're protecting that corner so nobody gets injured. And any stray shots, balls, soccer, lacrosse, whatever's being played out there, field hockey, it'll stay in play instead of going out into the parking lot area where cars are waiting, you know, a big safety thing. So we're happy about that. Our gym floor is being refinished today, or they started the process today, that's going to look great. We received a wet bulb globe thermometer which measures air temp, relative humidity, and the temp on the turf. So we're going to have a nice tool to be able to judge and make sure our students are safe and athletes are safe and we have a safe playing environment in this increasingly hot weather that we have. So that's a great tool for us to use. Enrollment, we have 14 new families enrolled as of today, hoping for more. Our new student to the district orientation, we're going to have that on Thursday, August 22nd, and that's going to be from 9:30 a.m. to 11:30. Kids can come have lunch with us, it's going to be a great day to have all our new students in, get a chance to walk the building and see what it's all about here. Our fifth grade meet and greet, that's going to be Tuesday, August 27th, and that's from 5:30 to 6:30. They'll get a chance to come in, meet their new teachers, meet their new classmates and be ready for the next day when school starts. And placement, again, like Misty said, our placement's done, we sent that out to the community and we're encouraging everybody to, you know, get on board and register their students and all their children as well. Any questions? Awesome, great. Thank you all, great to see you.
Thank you very much.
Kathryn Florey, Director of Student Services. So just a few updates, and Bill touched on the one regarding extended school year, so the program coincided with the Reach camps and they both really jive nicely together. It's great to have all the students in one building, it's very successful to have access to so many other adults while they're here. We're able to share adults between programs, which really makes things run smooth. For example, we had some people get sick in our high school program, normal summer illnesses, and so we were able to share staff with middle school. They shared a couple with us, so that was really helpful. So things continue to go really well. Kids were having a great time, you know, it really is a nice way to bring them all together. I wanted to thank Misty, David, Bill, Alita and the high school administrative team because they help by providing the principal piece to the program. And then Melissa Jean, Nancy Micho and Brittany Prendergast oversee the day-to-day of the special education piece and they did a phenomenal job. Diana Eisenhower, our preschool coordinator, ran our ESY program for pep at the high school. We did have a snafu before the program started with some flooding and thanks to Dave and his team by responding quickly, we were able to relocate them to the high school library, which was actually a pretty good space. When I went over to see them in there, it was okay. So things went well there. So that's kind of the ESY update. I know that Dr. Shapps has informed you of all of the change in Title IX regulations. So those went into effect on August 1st and he let you know we will be implementing those regulations. We've already done training with our administrative team and so we have other training that's set up with our attorney and then I'll be doing some as well. There's not a lot of big changes for teachers per se in terms of their role, but there's some changes in terms of how we respond to some things and then how we complete investigations. So we'll be fine tuning that process here pretty soon, too. I think, and the last update is we did hire a new assistant director of student services for the high school. His name is Michael Saharko. He has a C-H there in the middle, but the C is silent, so it's Saharko. He started with us this week, he needed to finish out his contract in his previous district, so he's getting his feet wet at the high school and getting right into it, but I'd like to welcome him, too. Yes, Denise?
As far as the flooding in the pep program, was it, you know, did it do damage or was it just needed to be kind of--
Dave will have to tell you the more specifics on it, but yeah, they needed to do some work in there. Was it a pipe? Yeah, Dave will be able to tell you better about that. Do you want to hear more about that? Because he can come up now.
I guess just curious a little bit.
Yeah.
So there's a preschool height kitchen sink in the classroom and the feeder tubes from the building plumbing to the fixture, the flexible tubes that are underneath like your kitchen sink. One of those broke and it was just gushing water. The space was unoccupied, so it ran for quite a while before the custodians finally realized what was going on. We brought in a restoration company who had to remove a bunch of drywall, put drying equipment in, and we did some spore count testing to make sure that we were dry and no mold in the building. And now we're in the process of putting the drywall back up and getting it painted, replacing the furniture and we'll be back in business. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to any board announcements. I saw, and maybe Mr. Sullivan can help me with this, do we have a middle school history teacher who is named Teacher of the Year?
Yes, great point, Matt. Val Wilson, eighth grade social studies teacher, was just named New Hampshire History Teacher of the Year. So that's something, I did put it on the sign and wanted to mention that. Ms. Wilson, I think, will be back this week. I haven't had a chance to talk to her about it, but I know it's a great honor for her.
I would say we'd love to invite her to, certainly to our meeting to have the honor of--
Yeah, that's a great, great idea. I'll reach out there and make sure we get her here for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, any board announcements? No. All right, moving on to district reports.
Good evening. Just a few announcements, just to follow up on what Kathryn said about summer programming. We had a very successful Reach program. We had about 650 enrollments. We offered STEM programming, programming in the arts. We had a drama camp, music camp and some fine arts camps. We also had some athletic and game camps as well. So we're really excited about that. A lot of our instructors are from Oyster River, they're teachers, they're paraprofessionals, they're staff members, so we're really fortunate to have so many people come forward and offer such a variety of camps. And I just want to thank the Durham Parks and Rec. That partnership has really been, it's been a wonderful partnership and Rachel and Kelly are amazing to work with, so I just want to thank them. And I want to thank Regan Lalonde and Dan Hammond, who work, Regan works at the Mastway and Dan works at the middle school during the school year, but they help to organize and coordinate the program and so they are integral in making it go off without a hitch. So I just want to thank them as well. I want to notify families that we do, we are working on our assessment dates, so we have STAR assessments and Akadian assessments, Akadience assessments within the district that we set those dates. However, we don't have the dates for SAS yet, that's the state that will set those dates. Last year they set them on the second week of August, so we anticipate that we'll be getting them either this week or next week. And once we have those, we'll notify families as to when the district-wide, the universal assessments will occur. We have faculty, new faculty involved with training already, so we have about 10 new members of our faculty who will be implementing Eureka Squared for the first time. And so they have been going through training in July and August to get ready for that implementation. We also have about 10 faculty members that will be implementing Open Circle for the first time and so they will be engaged in Open Circle training, that's two days of in-person training and then one day in the fall that will be virtual, just to follow up and see how the implementation is going. And so they will, that will happen in the next few weeks. And then new faculty orientation will start on August 21st and that's a two and a half day orientation. And we will, there's a variety of different things that we'll talk to them about and they will meet their mentors and be able to connect with their mentors. And we're really lucky to have Val Wolfson as our mentor, our teacher mentor coordinator. So she has been working to really get the program going and we've made some small changes. And one of those changes is that I hope to offer new faculty a series of, to offer almost like a professional learning community for the new faculty to come together and to talk about a variety of different things throughout the school year, including things like classroom management and questions and things that they may have about curriculum and some other pieces. So I'm excited about that. I don't know if anyone has any questions?
Thank you very much. And superintendent report?
Thank you. I want to take things out of order first, just to give a general update and then we'll shift our attention to a discussion about the elementary expansion initiative. I want to start off by also just echoing compliments to our maintenance and custodial staff for their hard work all throughout the summer. I would say from a distance and from close up, there's certainly a pride of place that they carry in terms of their commitment and effort. And with the summer heat and just the demands, it's incredible commitment to get things done in a very compressed period of time. So I just want to say my congratulations and thanks and appreciation for the work they do, getting schools ready for the start of the year. And on that note, early in the week, as has been mentioned, we opened the parent portal for class assignments, 8 through 8. I just wanted to take the opportunity to remind families that to continue, we're continuing processing registrations, but to remind people to complete registration, so we have accurate accounts. Just to comment on some enrollment numbers, at our next meeting, we'll give a formal just update on, a report on enrollments. But it's interesting going back to historical documents and I had an opportunity to look at the Long Range Planning Committee's work and today, earlier today, and it has changed by the afternoon, Mastway was exact to the prediction of 346 students. Now that's changed for one more, but it is important, I think, for our next discussion to talk about what projections look like in the near term and where we are. Clearly, we're up at the elementary level by about 21 students based on projections made two years ago. So it's really a moving target relative to what the next few years may be. It's good to have a reference point, but it really is important to kind of keep in mind that we're seeing fluctuations and this was supposed to be a decrease in the kindergarten enrollment this year and we've actually seen increase. So for the last decade, it's been alternating growth in larger, smaller, and now we're seeing a break in that pattern and we'll talk more about it in our next meeting as well. I also, you know, it's interesting, we're kind of as a group, administrative group, in two worlds. We're focused on the energy of starting school, welcoming new staff, but we're also thinking about the start of the budget process for our next budget. And I want to just remind the board and certainly thank the board and the community for the investment in several new positions that we'll have to start the year. So I'm looking forward to seeing the new strings teacher and the impact on that, the commitment by the board and the community to support that. Our mental health counselor is beginning and be able to talk about how we're going to focus our attention to really support that individual's work with students and staff. The support for the two additional elementary, the Kain and the third grade positions at Mohermit. And also the shift in our behavioral specialist position from a contracted service to in-house staff member. We wanted to see how that will help us in terms of having that individual really guide the work day-to-day and be a part of the faculty. So it's just important as we start the year to refresh, remind about the investments in personnel and program and hopefully we'll have more to talk about that as the year goes on in terms of impact as well. I also just wanted to put out there to the community, I'm looking forward to next Wednesday evening to host an informal meet and greet here at the middle school as part of my entry plan, so I invite as many parents and students, staff who'd like to just come by and say hello, give me a chance to meet individuals, community members next week, followed by a series of focus group sessions that will take place in September and October. That is really more organized and targeted to meet with elementary, middle and high school parents, so really to create a dialogue that is really focused on a set of questions that will help me really appreciate multiple perspectives from parents about their experiences, their thinking about the system, that will help kind of in many ways guide where we go next in terms of themes and action planning. We also are working on a Zoom or online alumni, a kind of town hall. So I'm working and looking to connect again with Anita Mathler, is it, for the Alumni Association to really see if we can reach across the globe to kind of encourage alum to meet with me. And then that will also kind of continue with the student and faculty meetings as we start the year in September, October. So I'm really going to have a busy schedule of conversation, looking forward to it and reporting back out as part of the entry plan process as well. And I think that's really it around the general reports. In your folders, in your packets, there is a document and I'm going to invite Dave Totti, Director of Facilities, to come up, Dave as well, to join us. I wanted to just update the community and certainly the school board about the progress on the elementary expansion initiative. Clearly, before I arrived officially in my role, in the month of June, the board and Dr. Morris certainly engaged in the conversation about what I would say are enrollment and space challenges that we had, based on what I would say a significant number of families who were assigned to Mastway. We talked about the next steps in dealing with the short-term challenges. As an outcome of that discussion, Dr. Morris moved forward with a commitment with architects from Nova Studio to plan for two particular initiatives. One was to build, to consider and investigate additional classrooms at Mohermit. And also, as part of the board's conversation, was a commitment to revisit the ongoing challenge of cafeteria space at Mastway. So that kind of brings you back to where we left off, without any public conversation about where we are as of today, what has happened since that time in June. And the purpose of the discussion is to report out the progress on our efforts as well. As you know, as a board, I had the opportunity in starting in July to kind of suggest that we look at not only the short-term, what I would say needs for facilities and space and enrollment pressures, but take this opportunity just to also move forward with a more comprehensive look at what may be, you know, possible decisions about use of space and solutions for long-term enrollment pressure and available space by really focusing simultaneously at completing a building survey, that is, a needs assessment survey of all our schools. Obviously, we have a new middle school, so really focusing on two elementary schools and the high school. And the rationale or the recommendation behind that is, as we start to finalize plans for and designs and concepts for Mohermit, we really want to, when we think about moving forward and considering a capital bond to complete the project, to understand everything that we face moving forward. And so I know that the board's talked about completing a capital plan as part of, and we will enter that discussion this evening, but it's our recommendation, and we've met with the architects, we'll take you through this, to really interrelate purposes, that is, to simultaneously get a real true sense of the conditions of our elementary schools and the condition of the high school and be able to look at all these projects simultaneously at the same time to have a better informed decision-making around where we go next in the future. It's not going to, as we get through this, change the scheduling of what we talked about, what you talked about in June, it just actually frontloads completion and deliverables for all three projects this fall, so that we can pause and say where we go next. And I'm going to maybe ask Dave, you want to go through, and Amy, you want to talk through the order of things, starting with Mastway, because that project, in terms of the cafeteria expansion, is pretty straightforward in terms of the deliverable and how we get there.
So the deliverable for Mastway cafeteria expansion is a full set of construction documents, it'd be a bid-ready package to break ground and proceed into construction. What we don't have right now at Mastway is a clear understanding of how much the expansion should be. We have some sketches of a 20-foot, some sketches of a 40-foot, and we haven't really weighed that against the size of the new cafeteria tables, against the anticipated population and against any structural, any changes that might be made in how we offer services. If that school were to become a pre-Cater 2 building and Mohermit became something else, all that gets kind of baked into how big that cafeteria needs to be to serve us for the next 20 years. So that's the deliverable for Mastway cafeteria expansion and we're hoping to have documents on that around Thanksgiving. The next piece is the, number two on your list, is the existing conditions survey. And as Dr. Shapps mentioned, is no point in just expanding a cafeteria at Mastway and saying that's everything that needs to be done. Well, we know there's work and the parking lot needs attention, there are roof problems, there's siding problems, there's all kinds of other things that really need to get baked into this, so we can create a real 10- or 20-year plan on what needs to happen with facilities. The third piece is the Mohermit classroom expansion. We had talked about three or six classrooms. We don't really have the numbers to make that decision in an informed way right now. The space needs study will speak to what should be done at Mohermit. And just like Mastway, Mohermit has other problems beyond just needing to add classroom space. There's parking lot issues, there's well issues, there's roof issues, the boilers are serviceable now, but they're getting older. So all that gets baked in between the three of them. Originally, it was kind of a two-pronged approach and the third prong that we've added is really the, to step back, look at the big picture, put it all together. The existing conditions report will then inform what we're going to do at Mastway and what we might be doing at Mohermit. The deliverable date on all of them is right around Thanksgiving.
And if I can add just to that, and thank you, Dave. Part of the, if you look at the number two and look at the tasks associated with the conditions analysis, you'll see that part of this is educational space and just visioning. What we really want to do is take this opportunity this fall to start to kind of think creatively about some long-term possibilities around how we deliver program. And so part of the conditions, I would say, analysis is to really sit down and think about what would a change in the delivery of education, if we considered reconfiguring schools, bring in terms of opportunity, then how does that impact, you know, the physical structures? And I think that's why it needs to be included. It allows us to say, you know, historically-- to be included. It allows us to say, you know, historically, what has the largest enrollments been over a long period of time to say, do we have enough space, right? If we wanted to pivot and make decisions with the community about thinking differently, do we have the physical space to accommodate? If not, as we consider short-term improvements, why wouldn't we plan? A perfect example, if one elementary school would become a pre-K K1 school, we would need to consider having bathrooms in classrooms. Well, that would be a real shift in our thinking about improvements that we want to talk through now and have that kind of information, numbers, impact. And similarly, you know, the plan will give us that broad picture. We know the high school has some priorities. We know the other elementary have additional priorities. And how do we kind of have the conversation about the potential for the Moheramit project, which is going to require significant dollars, and think at the time what other needs might make sense to go to the community, have them understand it? So that's why the three of these are standalone projects, but they're really interrelated. Amy, I don't know if you--
And the reason why we're asking for this to be delivered to us around October, November is because this is really going to play into the budget conversation. You know, we have reduced our CIP in order to help offset the cost of the middle school bond. We need to start building it back up again. And this needs assessment will help us with that. So when we put money in, we can really target those items that need to be worked on. But also, as we have the conversation for Masway and Moheramit, that we make the right choice when we spend the community's funds to expand on Masway, that it's what we need rather than come back and say, oh, we needed some more. So we want to make sure that we do our due diligence. And by having it done by the budget time, we'll be able to have those conversations with the board at the budget work sessions.
So the last piece I'd like to add, just for everybody's knowledge, you've already just mentioned Novo Architects. I'm just going to make sure everyone knows who that is, because you probably haven't heard that name before. But Novo Architects is Ann Ketterer and Steve Lapoot, who were formerly with Lavalley-Brenzinger. They were the design team that built this building. So they've since opened up their own firm, Novo Studio Architects. Mechanical is being provided by Dubois and King, which was formerly, yet, and Associates, who did the mechanical in this building. And structural is Foley-Buell-Roberts, who did structural in this building. So it's really the same design team that worked on this building, few different name changes, but it's people that the district has worked with for quite a while now. And it's people that have a lot of familiarity with the district already.
And I think in terms of order of things and priority at the Masway, because based on our, at least, conversation, the goal for looking at next summer as possible to kind of complete the project, that the timing of that and the limited timeline makes it the most, you know, I would say, pressing of the three. But we certainly, in conversation and a follow-up meeting, feel that all three of the, you know, projects have reasonable deliverables around the timing of late fall that will allow the board to continue the Questions?
For the cafeteria, are they doing, besides the documents, are they doing a cost estimate?
On--
Cafeteria, yeah.
Yeah, Masway will have a cost estimate, yes.
Any other questions? I just, can we get this added into the backup for this meeting so people can view it online and have an idea what we're talking about?
Absolutely. I think since there hasn't been any follow-up conversation with the community, you know, we will certainly want to summarize what was certainly presented here and then make sure that everybody has a sense of things. We're trying to build awareness and continue to communicate about where we stand, where we're going to go. And I think once we get down later in the agenda to discussions about school board goals, that will continue to fit into our thinking about how this all comes together.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Say again? Yeah. Is that all for you, Dr. Scheps?
Yes, that's--
Okay.
Thank you.
Business administrator.
So, good evening, everybody. I really would like to thank Dave Totti and his facilities guys for making my transition second year much smoother than my transition year was last year. So I'm really thrilled that he's here, dealing with all these things. Other than that, it has really been a great start to the year. We have Libby Simmons, who has started, she took over from Tim Galing, and she hit the ground running in the finance office. And we are actually well into almost having our DOE 25 done, so we will not have to ask for an extension from the state to wait past September 1st. So I'm very happy about that. And I'm hoping, going forward in the board packets, I will be able to give you a summary of what's going on, when auditors are coming, what's happening in the finance office. So we just have a general overview of what's happening in my department. So in the packet, I included for you, as part of our budgeting process, each year, Oyster River places money in our general operating budget to replace two to three buses or vehicles each year, depending upon our need. This year, we will be replacing two full-size yellow buses. In the past, we've worked with W.C. Cressy and Sons to purchase these vehicles. And Dr. Morris, before he had left, asked Lisa Huppie to do so again this year. So the order was placed last winter for a guaranteed delivery, and actually, they are ready. And as soon as you guys make a motion, I'll be able to put license plates on them. They are ready to go. We have them, actually, the dealership delivered them to us. But because this is a financing agreement, I require a motion from the board to allow us to enter into a five-year financing agreement with Dylar Truck Financial. The total would be $253,800, but with a payment annually of $57,017.13.
Denise?
I'd like to make a motion to purchase, to approve the purchase of the two buses through Dylar Truck.
Bless America. I apologize. So Denise made the motion to approve the purchase through Dylar Truck. Heather made a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Does the Finance Committee have anything to add? Okay. All in favor of the motion? Five in favor? And two no votes, or two not present? Thank you very much. The student representative is not here today. Finance Committee? No reports? Okay.
We have a meeting on the 20th, right? Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
With my microphone on, I will now say that we are moving on to the unanimous consent agenda, which will include, I'm going to make, does anyone want to pull anything out to speak about in the unanimous consent? Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve the unanimous consent agenda, including the nomination of the Oyster River High School Department Heads and Activity Stipends for the 24-25 school year, the nomination of Oyster River Middle School Activity Stipends for the 24-25 school year, and the nomination of Masway and Moheramit Elementary School Activity Stipends for the 24-25 school year. Can I have a second? From Kelly? All in favor? Five in favor, none opposed? Okay. We will move on to the discussion items, which are the school board goals. In the backup, did everybody get the board goals in that grid format? What I did was I, so the first thing I added at the top was the timeline. So just real quick and to see if anyone has any suggestions or thoughts on the timeline. Today, we review the draft and discuss the goals. At our next meeting on the 21st, we would discuss any edits that we've made and then finalize them. With an eye towards any edits, we would move to the next meeting, the 4th. But we could also, if we're ready, approve the goals at the next meeting. Does anyone have any thoughts or concerns about that timeline? Yeah, go ahead, Denise.
I'll just say, I really think, I'm not exactly sure who put it all together, but it looks really good. I think, I think it's a good summary, you know, it touches on all the different areas that we talked about, you know, at our last meeting, the areas that we wanted to focus on. And I like the layout, so I am happy with them.
This is Dr. Scheps' tool, the layout is the tool that he brought, but I filled out based on what you guys, what we talked about at our discussion at the workshop.
Actually, a question for Amy. I remember a couple of years ago, we did like five contracts in one year. This, we have the Guild Bargaining Agreement, CBA, coming up. Do we have any others this year besides them? I know we tried to stagger them, but--
No, we don't have another one. Next year, we have the paraprofessionals, but I do believe the aura usually is negotiated, not as a warrant article, but with the board--
Okay.
--later in the year.
All right. That's fine.
I'm glad it was off for that one. Brian is working on the focus area of teaching and learning. The goal is finalize the Guild Collective Bargaining Agreement. I did not put any initiatives in there. Does anyone, I mean, it seems pretty straightforward that we just want to negotiate, and the outcome would be the completion. Okay. Are there any that we think should be taken out?
Just, I just went back and looked at your outcome for the finalizing Guild Agreement. Completion of negotiations and a new CBA prior to June 30th, 2025, that actually should be earlier because it has to go on the ballot. So that needs to be completed. I would say no later than, what is it, December, I think? Yeah. So what do you change? We just need to, I mean, I know we're not finalizing it today, but we need to update that and let it be something Amy and Dr. Scheps can probably--
The deliver is really effective June 30th, or effective July 1st, correct? Or is it--
So the new CBA would be effective June 30th?
Well, July 1st.
July 1st, I apologize.
But it has to be approved. You had a completion of negotiations. They're going to be way, way before that.
Okay. And so the completion of negotiations prior to, with that, instead of putting a date, should it be put prior to--
There is a date. I don't have it off, Amy will know the date. She can fill that in.
The ballot deadline?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a deadline, there's a deadline from the school board to come up to an agreement with the union. That's by state statute.
Okay.
That way, we can have it for the public hearing, which in turn is in time for the deliberative session. But I can give the exact date.
Well, I think we can just write, "meeting all required deadlines," if everyone's comfortable with that. Unless you would rather have a specific date in there, we can get that added into.
Just change the date to the--
Okay.
--actual date, it's fine.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had something. Go ahead, Heather.
So in the fiscal oversight, capital planning, the outcome for the elementary school expansion project, I don't believe this year is likely going to be a bond or a warrant article, but it could be budgeting engineering, budgeting funds to finalize engineering and assessing current CIP needs for inclusion in the budget, or something to that effect, but probably not a warrant article.
For the outcome?
Yes.
Okay. And one more time on what you would change that to?
Budget engineering funds and current CIP needs.
Okay. Any thoughts there? Go ahead, Denise.
Well, as far as the cafeteria, is that, that is not a bond? That would be part, would that be rolled into our operating budget? Yes, okay.
Yes, we're anticipating, because we put $250,000 in this year's operating budget to come up with the drawings and all that we needed for that. When we come to the budget in the fall, we'll know, because they will give us a cost projection, what we need to put into the next operating budget. And we anticipate we'll be able to put it in general operating.
I guess I would like to leave, maybe say something about possible bond, warrant article, or, you know, I mean, I guess, instead of taking it out completely--
As an outcome, you mean?
Yeah, as an outcome.
As an outcome.
Or just--
Maybe the option of a bond.
Option, maybe that would be a good word, yeah.
Okay. Kelly, anyone else?
I have more.
Yeah, please, go for it.
All right. So in the focus area of communication engagement, instead of a goal of candidate night, perhaps the goal should be something more like publicly available information for school board candidates. In the initiatives, instead of determine board involvement, it might be district involvement, because some subsection of the board will be running every year potentially. And so you don't necessarily want the board to be the involved party, but the district could. And then the outcomes could be things, and I can send you what I've got, Matt.
That would be great.
Access to candidate information and successful enabling of candidate nights could be the outcomes we're looking for out of that goal.
I was hesitant to put outcomes there because I don't think, as a goal, this is something we would discuss. I'm not sure there's a consensus on whether we should be involved 100% or not. So that's why I was hesitant to put outcomes, clear outcomes.
If I could just comment, I think more so, I think that in the, under the initiative, is it really to assess board or district involvement? Because has it been determined yet that everything that has been proposed fits within the statutes and legal, you know, I would say, action of the board? So is this more about really determining or clarifying to the extent initiatives can move forward, or the range of initiatives that you would like to consider, as you stated it, Heather?
So I think we have had a lot of discussion on this over the past, and we sort of hemmed and hawed. And I'd sort of like to push this one way or the other. You know, we have offered some technology help for different folks running candidate nights or forums. And I think we should still, like, support the Student Senate if they want to host a candidate night, that that should still be something we support. But we've talked about, you know, whether we could just put resumes on the website, and, you know, some method for folks to find the information, because it is really hard to find it. And so I would like to do it this year. But if we, assessing feels like, well, maybe we'll look at it in January and, well, maybe we'll actually do--
So what we--
Like to do something.
A suggestion we can do there then is change that line to a goal. So instead of the goal reading how it reads, have the goal be, assess or determine district involvement in the candidate night. And then the initiatives would be, possible for, assess options for possible plan for candidate nights, or information being made available, and what kind of support we're going to offer groups that want to make that information available. So I'm going to change the goal to assess and determine what our involvement is going to be.
I actually liked Heather's wording of making the goal a little broader, so including candidate night. But if, Heather, if you want to kind of repeat your, because you sort of had a little bit broader. And I'm fine with using the words assess and whatever you said, assess and determine, or whatever, candidate night or other, however you said it, Heather.
I have--
I didn't write it down, so--
I have here, district involvement in election information distribution? Okay.
And I would specifically say, including candidate night, though, because--
We'll put that in initiatives.
Yep.
Yeah. Technical support. Do you have more?
Yeah, of course I do. I have pain in the butt. So under the leadership bits, we have the student mental health. And so, under the initiatives, should it be review of policies and procedures regarding bullying and cell phones, which maybe should be two separate things? And then an outcome is something like consistent implementation of policy and procedures at all schools, or adjustment of policy procedure to meet actual needs for those two. So that was one. And then the other might be something like security and continuing updates about the implementation of mutual link, other bits and pieces that we're, we've been discussing, and decisions that have to be made relative to security as an outcome.
Under student mental health, or as its own--
It would be its own thing.
Yep.
Leadership isn't necessarily the right place either, but it didn't really fit in either, any of the other boxes either, so I stuck it here.
How about, how about putting it under communication? Because that is really about communication and emergency, right, is what you're talking about, the, right?
The mutual link is not really-- The mutual link is not really-- doesn't really deal with parent communication. It's more about how the agencies talk to each other.
Right, but it's still-- but the overall, the category refers, blah, 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 to all stakeholders and efforts to promote engagement. So I think it fits better with community than I do with leadership.
I don't have a strong feeling. Anyone else have an opinion?
We could make it into "Boo."
Yeah.
And now I'm done.
If I can just say, I think just to Heather, to your comments, clarifying the initiatives or outcomes around bullying and cell phones would be helpful.
Okay. And you can send me your notes? All right. What I will do is take the notes that I have taken and the notes that Heather will send me, and apply them, and then send this back out to everyone for your review. Oh, no, it's okay, go for it.
The only thing-- we have it on a couple of them in terms of the outcomes where there are defined timelines for these things. Do we want to, within some of those outcomes, look at-- we would like this deliverable-- you know, it doesn't really help us to talk about the school board candidate night in March, when we've already had the election. Like, put some dates on some of these things to talk about when we would like to address it. That way, it sort of paces things out for everybody appropriately.
Okay.
I think it's not as much dates as it is prioritization.
Well, it's got to be a little louder, I'm sorry.
Not as much dates as it is prioritization of which ones got to deal with first.
Okay.
And that's, because dates, you never-- there's always going to be something thrown in, a wrench thrown in, that's going to screw that up. I can tell you, after eight years of doing this, it always gets screwed up.
Yeah.
Something gets thrown in there.
I also think, for planning purposes, in terms of setting the school board meeting agendas and the topics, it will allow us to plan, looking forward, when we will have information to discuss and share the specific. So for example, if we do have a completed CIP plan late fall, we can say, "Where do we want to fit this in in terms of public discussion about that and the timing of it?" So those dates, not necessarily dates, but prioritization becomes important.
Please.
So I went online to the New Hampshire DRA, and the last day for negotiated cost items to be finalized, it will be Tuesday, January 7th.
2025. Okay. Does anyone else have any comments?
I think they look good, that makes sense.
Okay. Excellent. Gianna did send some comments, but I think we've actually covered everything that she sent.
Did Dr. Scheps, you mentioned something about cell phones a minute ago? Did I hear something about that?
The cellphone-- under the initiative, review procedures regarding bullying slash cell phones. So I didn't-- I was just asking for clarification.
I thought I heard you say that, so--
I think it's taking what I have and separating them and expanding them a little bit to make them more clear around what we, as a board, can do to help support the administration.
Right. And also, we haven't really reviewed the cellphone policies in at least five years, since I remember we last discussed them. A lot of things have changed in those five years. I think we really need to look at our policy, or at least the following of the policy, how we do it, and how we may be able to help staff and administration by adjusting that policy. But we need people on the front line that share with us how that's working, because I know it's different everywhere. Everybody's different on how they follow that policy.
I don't think I'm turning it off. I must be doing it without touching it. The two administrative, the superintendent, assistant superintendent, are we front-loading these goals? Like, are they all prior to the end of the, like, Christmas?
So I would say that in our initial conversation and we had this discussion, I think we talked about this-- the calendar, the year that is already unfolding and the realization of realistic deliverables that may be between now and June, the end of the school year. And as I, through our conversation, I thought we kind of reconciled that--
Okay.
It made sense in some ways, since the majority of the board will continue beyond that,